I'll call, I'm meeting to order and I'll open our hearing for 19 Carter Street. This session is being recorded. Your image, voice, or telephone number may be recorded for record purposes. I'll introduce the board. I'm Lynn Ryan. Let's see, Denny, you want to introduce yourself?
Hey, Dennis Bartlett.
Okay, Ginny. You're muted, Lynn.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Ginny Zukatinsky.
Okay, Pat?
Pat Jackson.
Jim Royer?
Hula.
Okay, Keith Suzy?
It's me.
Okay, and Susanna Roberts?
That's me.
And Leanne Leahy is the Land Use Board's Clerk. Okay, this is a hearing to determine the validity of a decision made by the Building Commissioner. Under Article 10, Section 1020, noise, it lists what can be the noise at property lines at different times of the day. I'll ask that we try to state a topic. I know there's some emotion involved in this, but what we have to determine is whether that section applies to the property in question. So who is here representing this petition? Who is going to speak to us? Raise your hand, please.
I'm gonna guess.
Evelyn has her hand raised.
All right. Evy's allowed to talk.
Okay, thank you. Evy, do you like, would you like to present your case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Lynn and board for hearing this. I would like to have one of our board members, Mary Porter, speak on our behalf. She's with me at the same computer.
Okay. Mary, go ahead, please.
Okay. And also with us tonight is Paul McKelk. So we're all at 19 Carter on Evy's computer. And I don't know if there's video feed into you or whether we're just audio.
Right now, you're just audio and you have a block on the screen.
Okay. All right. So let me just start out and ask the board if you have any questions.
Well, would you explain to the board?
About what we're doing here, why we've
Well, would you like to explain what you're doing here?
Sure, sure. What we're doing is we're asking the the board to reverse the determination of the Town of Berlins Building Commissioner that set out in his letter of August 17, 2021. And in his letter, he said that Section 1020 noise is applicable to your facility, meaning 19 Carter, and that you're not allowed to exceed the noise levels as outlined below for concerts and other events. I'm reading from his letter, which is also Exhibit A in the package that we submitted. And Section 1020 noise levels are defined in Berlin's zoning bylaw, Section 1021.1, as "noise as measured at any property line of the lot shall not exceed the following intensities." And there's two intensities listed, one for 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. That's listed at 55 decibels. And then 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM is listed as 50 decibels. So we are asking the board to reverse this determination and to also determine that Section 1020 noise zoning bylaw is not applicable to the 19 Carter facility. So it's very specific relief we're looking for in this petition.
Would you like to state on what ground?
I can take you through, sorry.
Would you like to state on what grounds you feel this is not applicable to you?
Sure. So if we look at the the section of the zoning law, which is attached as Exhibit B to the submission, and you go through the sections of that zoning law, you can see that that the scope of Section 1020 is limited to construction noise at building sites. Therefore, it doesn't apply to music concerts at 19 Carter, which is an existing building with an existing occupancy permit. So, so, and if you, and I can parse it out. If you go to Article 10 Performance Standards of Berlin's Bylaws, it begins with Section 1010, and that says, "All buildings shall be constructed in accord with the bylaws of the town of Berlin." So that gives you the umbrella overview of that section of the bylaw. The next Section 1020 noise, what I read previously, "noise as measured at any property line of the lot shall not exceed," and I want to emphasize, "noise as measured at any property line of the lot, LOT, shall not exceed the following intensities," again, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, 55 decibels, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, 50 decibels. And then if you go to the definition section of that part of the Berlin zoning bylaw, Article 14 definitions defines lot as, quote, "C building lot," quote. And then Article 14 defines, quote, "building lot," quote, as "a building lot is that area of land described in an application for a building permit or an application to the Board of Appeals for a special term permit or variance or otherwise is the area on which a structure is to be constructed or a certain use is to be carried on. A building lot shall not include any part of the street, which is relied upon to qualify as, qualify the lot as to frontage." And then if you look at the remainder of what's in Article 10, you can see it relates to construction activities, and it also relates to aspects of the regional shopping center overlay district, example lighting. So if you look at Section B, you can see, or look at Exhibit B, rather, you can see the full text of Article 10. So if, and if you, and if you take Section 2020, or 1020, and you look at it against Berlin's zoning laws taken as a whole, it's clearly intended to regulate building lot construction noise. And, you know, you have to take it out of context to bring it to a place that would apply to a building that is currently occupied, such as 19 Carter. And we also, we're in an odd position where the Building Commissioner's first view, not a formal determination letter, but an opinion expressed in an email, is that Section 1020, the noise bylaw for construction does not apply to 19 Carter. So we really need clarity from this board because we've had opinions on both sides of the issue, and although it's very clear to us that this Section 1020 noise ordinance was intended for construction activity.
Thank you for your presentation. Does anyone on the board have anything they'd like to interject? How do the members of the board interpret this bylaw? Do they interpret general requirements to be everybody and then exceptions during construction, or do they agree with the petitioner?
I have a question for the board, actually. If you look at page 92, which has the Article 10, it has at the same level of heading, 1010 is building construction, and then 1020 is noise, and then 1030 is exterior lighting. And I would like to say, and I'm willing to have feedback and other opinions on this, but each one is a separate category. So there's 1010 building construction, and then there's the category 1020 noise, and then there's the category 1030 exterior lighting. So it is a bit confusing on that level, but if we're going to say that 1030 exterior lighting is not specifically for building construction, but for also existing construction, I mean, existing buildings, I'm not saying it is, I'm asking the board if they feel that way, then we have to assume that 1020 noise would also fall under building construction and existing conditions. But it does say in the subcategories that it's referring to construction. So that part is confusing. So that's my first question. Do we see them all as part of building construction, or do we see them all as separate entries under Article 10?
Does anyone comment on that?
If I can just chime in here, I think all of these, each one of these headings, 1010, 1020, 1030, it goes all the way up to 1070 on the next page in the zoning bylaw. Each one of those, in my view, stands on its own. 1020 is not a subparagraph of 1010. So, I mean, the building construction paragraph stands by itself. The noise paragraph stands by itself. These are all various performance standards that fall under Article 10, but they don't fall under each other. And if it was the case that they did fall under each other, then, for example, the the lighting that was brought up, all of these requirements that go to lighting of signs and things like that, those that only applied during the construction phase, they wouldn't, once once a building was completed construction, those, none of those requirements would any longer apply. And I don't believe that's the case.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else here to express an opinion?
Yeah, I guess I would like to say that I agree with Jim, you know, reading it, we can all agree that there's a lot of errors here and some conflicting information. But prior to this, you know, I, reading these things, I thought they were independent bullets on their own, and it wasn't related to construction. And like Jim just mentioned, that exterior lighting issue that came up several meetings ago, you know, at no point did anybody say that this applies to construction only. So the precedent, just in the, you know, the few years that I've been on the board, we've referenced this area as to established community and not just building. So, you know, I agree that there's tons of errors in here, and now that, you know, we really look at it, there's things that should be clarified, but you know, I have I read this differently, that it's not specific to construction only.
I think that was well said. I agree with Keith. Yeah, we did interpret it before that it was not necessarily construction, and actually in two or three different cases, yeah.
Ginny or Denny, do you wish to chide in on this?
No, I also agree with Keith and Jim's point. And as Pat said, yes, this has come before us before. Not related to ongoing construction.
I can speak, I'm saying, I look at 1021, and it's general requirements, and it's specifically, as far as I can see, is for construction or maintaining the property after snow removal, sweep in the parking lot, and so on.
Okay, I'm getting a consensus of the group that you feel that the general requirements apply to all lots in town. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
And that the exceptions that are listed are specific to certain items such as snow plowing or construction.
Yes, poorly worded, but that is my understanding of the spirit and intent of the bylaw.
Okay, I'll ask if anyone else wishes to speak, or the petitioners wish to speak again. Please raise your hand so you can be recognized if you wish to speak.
There are three other people that have their hands raised. Joe Atkinson, June Miller, and Jill Foizie. Should give particular order?
Can we hear from them, please, one at a time?
All right, I am going to, oh, one disappeared. So Jill Foizie, I am allowing to speak here. She's muted.
Am I unmuted now?
You are.
Okay, cool. Good evening to all of you. If we're sticking to the noise ordinance or bylaw, and whether it's strictly to be interpreted as commercial or for a pre-existing building that's having a business in a residential agricultural, you would, if they apply 55 decibels to a building site that normally is away from residential, wouldn't it be that the decibel level would be lower in a densely occupied area for, like, 19 Carter? Wouldn't it stand to reason?
Could you rephrase that, please? I'm confused with
Well, wouldn't it stand to reason if you had a business in a residential agricultural in a dense neighborhood that the decibel levels would be lower or, you know, regulated to be lower instead of an open construction site that's at 55? Wouldn't you think that a neighborhood, it should be wider? So I don't think, you know, if they're applying 55 decibels to a construction site, I would think that a dense neighborhood, the decibel level should be lower.
I'm not sure what difference it would make because it's measured at the property line, so.
Well, it's a denser, it's closer, the residential areas are closer to the business than it would be in a commercial. Usually have open lots.
Jill, I understand what you're saying, but I think the point that we're making, that the board is making, is that these rules apply to everybody, and the that they shall not apply to the A through D that are listed under 1021.2. And I think because temporary construction is listed as A under 1021.2, that they now have a 1021.3 saying that although you're exempt, you're supposed to try to keep it down.
Correct. That's, that's a good point. I just want to relay how we all feel around this business. You know, we had an arbitration meeting with Margaret on the 24th of August that we thought we made some headway, but I guess we didn't. So I'm just awaiting the results of this meeting.
Well, what I'm taking from my colleagues, and quite frankly, myself, is that even I, as a private citizen in a residential neighborhood, would be subject to these decibels at my property line. Now, I don't think anyone goes around with a device and checks the decibels unless there's a complaint from a neighbor. And that's what triggers someone to say whether or not they're exceeding the decibels. Quite frankly, I would feel there would need to be a change, and the only one that can make a change in the bylaw is the planning board. How do the rest of you feel? Is that kind of sum it up?
Yeah, I agree, because also the way it's written currently, there's no stipulation for what happens between, let me see if I read this, 7:00 PM to 11:00, actually, it's conflicting. 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM is 55, but 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM is 50, so there's a confusion as to the hour from 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM, what the actual Yeah, there's an overlap, so there, it isn't clear. And also, reading what the state allows for noise levels, the state's actually stricter in which they say you're only allowed 10 decibels over the ambient noise. So if your ambient noise is around 30, you're only allowed to go up to 40 decibels. But one thing that they have in the state bylaw is that events that have special permits with the town for that single event shall fall in the exempt category, and we don't have that. And I think that's something that the planning board also needs to address.
Thank you, Susanna. Now, we heard from Jill. Was there anyone else with their hand up that we would want to speak?
Uh, yeah, I saw a couple. I'm trying to, here we go. Let's see, we have, oh. Evelyn still has her hand up, but I don't know if that's old. We have Wolf.
No, no, that's current. Like to speak, please.
All right, could we hear from whoever we haven't heard from yet, and then we'll come back to you, Evy.
All right, then I'm going to allow Wolf to talk. All right, as soon as he unmutes, we'll hear him.
Wolf, you need to identify yourself and
There we go.
Okay.
Here is.
All right, Wolf is here.
Okay, Ken, I'll have to ask you to give your name and your street address, please.
Richard Wedeman, 32 Woodward Ave, and Leanne Wedeman.
Thank you.
Hello.
Go ahead, please.
Well, we only have a couple of things, I think, to add. It's just that in this neighborhood, in close proximity, you have both elderly and people who have job obligations that need to get to bed early. And I think that's a major issue here.
There are also some other issues. We have eight acres of pure ledge. Our house is on ledge, and eight acres behind us is ledge. So all that noise reverbs back into this house and is extremely loud. We have not been able to, this past summer, we were not able to sit out in our own yard all weekend or during the nights that these things were going on, which it got increasingly loud. We couldn't listen to our quiet music. We couldn't have our dinners out there. The parking and the people all over, the dog was barking, so we just stayed inside all summer long. It was an imprisonment.
And I thank you for your comments, and I understand that you've endured some negative things from this. But what we are here to do is specifically, without a motion, decide whether or not this bylaw
I understand, I understand.
That property.
The decibel thing, please.
Well, you know, just from a technical standpoint, every 3 dB increase in DVA doubles the noise power, if you will, the loudness. So, you know, like, as earlier mentioned, they went from 30 to 40 dB on that state example. That's a huge increase. Every 3 dB is double the noise output, so. You know, it's already, it's already at reasonable levels in there. You wouldn't want them to be any higher. If anything, you might consider the state levels.
When they quieted the concerts down to where we could live in our house, in our yard, they were all still having a great time. Nobody suffered, but it was the loud ones that just got increasingly louder that were just uncontrollable.
All right, we thank you very much for your comments. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak before I go back to Evy?
Uh, yes, we have Barry Agar. I don't know if he's coming as a resident or as a moderator, or what's the term I want, town representative. So I'm going to allow him to talk, and he can let us know. All right, Barry, you can talk. Or not. Barry, can you hear us?
Is he muted?
No.
No.
All right, so I'm gonna move on to someone else, and maybe he can raise his hand again when he figures it out. Okay, so who's next? Rebecca von Geldern has her hand up. I'm going to allow her to speak. And she is muted. There she goes.
Hello, this is actually Eric von Geldern. Rebecca's here with me, as well as Johan, our son. I just wanted to raise that the ambient noise level currently in the center of town is 40 decibels. 30 decibels is practically inaudible to the human ear. It is absolutely correct that it is a double in sound pressure level every 3, that noise is increased. I think it's worth noting, the average lawn mower, when running, is about 85 decibels. The construction bylaw, as stated, I assume would be put into place because construction would happen toward the center of a very large piece of property. Community activity that's occurring in the center of town, if you have a loud conversation, it will exceed 55 decibels at the property line. So I think we need to consider some precedent here when we establish that 55 decibels at the property line is considered an inappropriate level. When, if I turn my car on in the middle of the night, I will certainly exceed 50. I think that's going to be an important consideration. Thank you.
I thank you for your comments. Unfortunately, we can't change the bylaw. We can only say whether or not it applies in this instance. It would be the planning board that would make any changes to the bylaw. Is there anyone else, Susanna?
We have June Miller, and promoting her to allow to talk, and she's muted, so she can unmute hopefully. There we go. All right, June, you can talk.
Please state your name and address, June.
Okay. All right, we'll have to come back to June. June, you can raise your hand again if you figure out your audio. Okay, and let's see, has Joe Atkinson already spoken?
Nope.
Oh, I don't believe so.
Okay. Allowing to talk is Joe Atkinson, and he's unmuted.
I'm Joe Atkinson, 11 Walnut. I live right next door. All I want to know is, am I allowed to ask, what are they looking for, for decibel levels? Do we have a number? And do we have a timeframe that they're looking for?
All this board can determine is whether or not the bylaw applies to this property.
Understood. Will there be a meeting when the planning board goes to this, or will that be something decided strictly by the planning board?
That would be something that would have to be brought up to the planning board.
Okay. Okay.
Joe, can I ask where you stand on this? So, you know, never mind 19 Carter, as a resident of Berlin, if your neighbor started making noise at 2:00 in the morning or, you know, 10:00 at night, what decibel do you feel is inappropriate?
Well, like Eric said, I mean, 45, 55 is a car starting. A lawnmower is 85, I understand that. But if somebody's mowing their lawn in the middle of the night, I'm definitely going to go over and ask them to stop.
But if somebody's mowing their lawn in the middle of the night, I'm definitely gonna go over and ask them to stop. The concerts were going till 9:30. They had to exceed 55 decibels. I think that at 2:00 in the morning, at 9:30 at night, it's too loud. This is a neighborhood. There's babies, there's older people, there's people like me that get up early. I don't think it's okay. Um, but I'm not, I'd never have said they have to shut it down completely. I just think it's too late, too frequent and, um, too loud.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else, Susanna?
Um, let's see, uh, we've, I, I think we're back to Evy. Unless June has, I'll try June again and see if she can now speak so that we can hear. Okay, um, she's unmuted. June, can you speak so we can see if you, we can hear you? Okay. Um, okay, then I guess we're back to Evy and Mary.
Okay, Evy, please unmute and go ahead.
Thank you. It's, it's Mary speaking.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll try to get us focused on what the petition is is about. I appreciate the comments of people, um, who, I appreciate the public that comes to these sorts of things and expresses themselves because I think we all need to be good citizens and I think, uh, that's true of all of us, including 19 Carter. Getting back to what this petition is about, it's about the particular determination letter. Two things. I hear the board that you've looked at this, at this, Article 10, and believe that it has applicability beyond construction sites and to general sorts of activities. But if I could draw your attention back to what I said at the beginning, which is noise as measured at any property line of the lot, of the lot, and the lot is defined in this section as a building lot. And I think this is a really important point, that, that this particular provision on noise is focused on construction. Whereas, um, I accept the board's prior determination or prior evaluation of a different matter where you said, "Well, this section has applicability both to construction and to existing, uh, buildings." So, so that's one point. Secondly, if this 1020 noise provision is determined to be, uh, applied to, to areas that are not under construction, then I have to ask whether the building commissioner has jurisdiction to issue a determination letter of the sort that he issued to 19 Carter. Because we are not under construction and I believe his jurisdiction is, is, uh, with respect to lots and buildings under construction.
If I may, um, Evy, that, or, or, that, that's not correct. The building commissioner is also the zoning enforcement officer for the town. So he has the authority to, uh, enforce any zoning provision, uh, in the zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank everyone for their comments. Suzanne, we don't have June back, do we?
Well, she's still here, but I don't know if we'll hear her. We'll, we'll try one more time.
I'm wondering if there's some issue with the microphone on her computer.
I don't know. I I can't unmute her. She has to do it herself.
Yeah, she's muted.
And her hand has gone down. Okay, so I am going to remove her because she's put her hand down.
So I think we've heard from everyone, uh, wants to be heard.
There's one more, Judy.
Judy, Judy's put her hand back up. So I am promoting her to allow to talk. And as soon as she unmutes, she can talk and identify herself again.
Judy Boomen, no longer live in Berlin, but I'm on the board of 19 Carter. I just wanna point out that in his letter, he did not take any readings at all. And I'm not sure what that letter was actually for because while it states that Section 10, it does not say that we, um, violated it since no readings were taken. Just thought...
Judy, I think he just determined, and it must have been discussion among folks, that this article did in fact apply to them. It is not that they're in violation. It, it's nothing other than the fact of whether or not it applies to them. And he wrote them a letter saying his determination was that it does in fact apply to them. And what we're asked to do is to, um, either overturn the decision of the building commissioner or, um, uphold the determination by the building inspector.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else? Because we're running a little late now for our next hearing.
No, I don't see anyone that has not spoken yet. Do you want to hear from the building inspector?
That's up to the board. Hearing no requests for, does he have his hand up?
No.
Okay. Okay, folks, I, I think we've heard from everyone that wants to be heard from. And I think, um, from the poll before, it's determined that, what our understanding is, I would entertain a motion either to, um, uphold the building inspector's ruling or to overturn the building inspector's ruling.
If I may, Lynn, I, I think the proper format for this is for us to either approve or deny the request that the submitter sent to us as opposed to upholding the, the building commissioner's determination.
Fair enough, Jim. Do you care to make a motion?
I, I would make a motion that we deny the requested relief on 19 Carter.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, I'll just poll the memberships for a vote because we're virtual. Um, Susanna.
I, which, wait a minute. I'm confused.
To deny the petition to overturn the, uh, building inspector's determination. So they're asking us to overturn it and he's saying we're denying the petition.
Okay, I agree, we are denying the petition. It was backwards. I wasn't sure how to answer it.
Okay.
Agreed.
And, um, Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Agreed.
Jenny?
Agreed.
Hi.
And Denny, you've already voted in advance. Okay, and I'm an I. Okay, so the determination of this board is to deny the petition of 19 Carter Old Methodist Church. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
I didn't get who made the motion.
That was me, Pat Jackson. Or either way, fine, doesn't matter.
And who seconded?
I did.
Okay.
I'll take a roll call vote. I'm an I. Susanna?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Denny?
Hi.
Okay, the hearing's closed. For those in the audience, we'll be issuing, I have to write up a decision. Once I write it up, and I'm slow because I'm old, we have to have the folks sign it. And then it will be sent to those who were listed as abudas and to the petitioner. Okay, folks, we have another hearing this evening. And that is for 275 Central Street. And I'll just repeat again, I'll, uh, I'll open the hearing. And for those that may not have been present, I'll just repeat that this session is being recorded. Your in-voice or telephone number may be recorded for record purposes. Again, the board, I'm Lynn Ryan. Susanna?
I'm Susanna.
Susanna Roberts.
Yeah, that's you.
Kate?
Keith Susie.
Jim?
Jim Maroyer.
Pat?
Pat Jackson.
Jenny?
Jenny Zukatinsky.
And Denny?
And a spotlight.
Okay, then, um, who is here representing or going to speak to the board from the petitioner?
Mike has raised his hand and I am promoting him to allow to talk as soon as he unmutes.
Hello, hey, everyone.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Yep, uh, it's Mike Urrardi. I'm the owner of 275 Central Street.
Okay, um, would you care to explain your request to the board?
Yes, um, so appreciate everyone being on tonight. So the purpose of the request is to create a internal office for my business at that location, which is in the limited business zoning district. So since 2016, I've, I've worked out of a, a room in my house with, uh, with this business and I'm excited to possibly start this new opportunity here. Look forward to cleaning up the property, which is been in quite disrepair for, for quite a lot of years now. So about our company, we, we purchase single-family homes, we renovate them and resell them. So this location is strictly an internal office. I hire out all my contractors. I meet with the homeowners at their houses and we complete all of our closings either at the registry of deeds or a, an attorney's office. So, so this building would just allow me the space to, to hire a coordinator to kinda help me out with the day-to-day business. Something which I can't do where I am now. Our company has, we have an A-plus rating with the Better Business Bureau. We have a lot of five-star reviews. I could provide a link to that if anyone wants, uh, any info on the company. And, um, I plan to use the property with, just as is, with the current structures in place. I'm not looking to add anything. I'm not looking to do any additions or anything like that. Just looking to keep it as is and, and fix it up as it stands. So that's, uh, that's pretty much what, uh, what I'm requesting.
I just have a couple of preliminary questions. Uh, that house was previously a residence. How long has it not been a residence?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, at least a couple of years, I think. Um, I purchased it from the bank. So I'm not quite sure.
And you have no intention of using it as a residence, correct?
Right, just, just as an office for, for me and a coordinator.
Okay. I know you were instructed and I'm wondering if you'd had the opportunity. Because what you're here for tonight is site plan approval. As a use, office space is allowed within the, um, limited business district. In the you need a site plan. Uh, the category would be business or professional office, offices. And it is allowed with a site plan within the limited business district. Did you have an opportunity to read through what is required on the site plan?
Uh, yes, I submitted a site plan. I think we checked all the boxes on that. If there's something I'm missing, I could certainly clarify or add some more info.
Okay. You understand that there are things like, landscaping, parking, access and egress. Could you tell me how many square feet there are in this proposed office space?
Yes, I believe it's 12, 1,280. Have it right on me, but I couldn't find it.
Okay. Could I ask, Leanne, how many folks are present now for this hearing?
Um, there are six, including the building commissioner, um, the interim police chief and the fire marshal and, um, a select board member.
Okay. Do you, do we have a copy of the plan that either Keith or you, Mike, could display for those in attendance? Could we screen share?
Let me see if I can open it up here.
All right, let Keith see if he can open up the, um, site plan.
So the square footage is 12, 1,219 square feet, according to the tax record.
Unfortunately, it's totally silent here. Let me see if I can, um, I would try to, uh, share my screen. Is that the plan we're looking for?
Yes, that's the one.
Do you have any parking indicated? I see a driveway. I see no parking.
I couldn't find any either.
Yeah, there's, there's a total of eight parking spots there. If you look, um, there's two in front of the garage. Uh, let's see, so the garage is the structure to the right. Right, yeah, that one, there's, there's two in front of there. There's, there's one closer to the street. And then all those cutouts you see as you go up the driveway are individual parking spots as well.
They're just not labeled. Um, the driveway access and egress is from Central Street, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Have you, as a result of putting parking on here, read the parking regulations?
Um, you have to familiarize me with it. That, that was all there. I didn't add anything.
Oh, I understand, bud. If you take a look at Article 8 and, um, Section 811, there's a table of parking regulations and how many spaces are needed and offices listed as one of the categories.
Also too, um, I, I see that there's a sign, but we know nothing about it. Nothing's listed on the actual site plan other than it's, I believe, wood.
Yeah, I, I don't have the sign created yet. I was waiting here.
Yeah, again, I, I just think, um, shrubs, the usual kind of, I think maybe a few more things should be just listed on here and stated.
Okay. So, so shrubs.
You actually need the parking spaces where we, I understand they're near the shed, but I probably need to see it a little bit, you know, where they actually... I probably need to see it a little bit, you know, where they actually line up. Have you spoken to the fire and the police and all that?
About parking?
Just about the actual egress.
I haven't, I was, I guess I was under the impression, this was kind of the first step. And it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's not a business where I'm going to have customers in and out. It's just, it's literally just me getting out of the house and one other person there. We, we don't have a business where people have to meet us there or we have people there where we have meetings or anything like that. But I can certainly.
I appreciate your perspective and the fact that you're not going to have many employees. But I'll ask the building inspector, building commissioner to correct me if I'm wrong. But once we approve a site plan for office space, it could be used for any kind of an office. That, you know, on the site plan, we cannot limit the number of folks. We can only say that the parking spaces meet the requirements of the law for offices based on the number per square foot that there needs to be.
And again, are you using previous parking spaces or are they new? Or I'm not quite sure where the number eight came from.
I just, I just counted what was there. I haven't done any paving or any, anything like that.
Okay. We have members of the public safety. Do they have any comment?
Hanks has his hand up.
We can.
So yes, Lynn, to your point is that if you're, if you're approving a site plan for an office space, excuse me, it's going to carry through for future uses as well. Based on the table under 811, he's required one space for every 250 square feet, which be a total of five spaces. Each space is required to be nine feet wide by 19 feet deep. So it looks like he just really needs to label this as to where he's going to have his five, his minimum five, nine by 19-foot spaces.
Okay, Rich, thank you, but could you tell us access and egress? There are specific rules in a limited business district.
I got the bylaws in front of me, I'll have to try and read into it a little bit if you want to. Move on to someone else, when I look it up, or you want me to try and fumble through at the same time.
No, I think that that, we could move on to public safety.
Okay.
See if they have any comments. Raised in public safety.
David Litchwell is promoted to speak.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, on behalf of the fire department, I have a concern, looking at the property line is going through the current driveway about three quarters. So the concern is the on-ramp to 495. If that driveway is going to have to be removed, moved on to the existing property?
Does the petitioner have a comment?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand. The, so the on-ramp.
Well, I think.
Talking the on-ramp to the right, are we looking to the right?
I think what public safety has to concern themselves with is, let's say the next use of this office space was for a real estate office. Now, in your case, it'll just be you in and out of there. But in the case of a real estate broker being in there, the traffic could be quite heavy. And it would be coming down on an intersection right by the light there and right by the access to 495. So do you have any comment on that?
I, I don't really, because I, I don't know where else it would go. I, I wouldn't have anywhere else to relocate it to, I don't. Because I don't, I don't own out to Taylor Road, I don't own that side of it. There's, the, the people that own the gas station over there own a strip of land there. So I wouldn't be able to go out that side.
Except your property does a butt Taylor Road for a couple hundred feet.
Are you talking in, in the back?
Yes.
I mean, I guess, I, I just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to afford to put a driveway all the, I just.
Just for Mr. Litchwell, if you, oh, no, I'm sorry, just this, this is for Rich. If you take a look at 843, the driveway widths.
Yes. 843, yes. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah, so the driveway should be 10 feet for one-way traffic and 18 feet for two-way traffic. You know, width of a driveway to two-way traffic may be reduced to 10 feet when the driveway is not longer than 50 feet and provides access to not more than five spaces. So he's, he's required five, so he's not more than five. It's sufficient turn of space to drive us that vehicles need not back into a public way. The other part, they look at, I did look up at number and location of access points. And the minimum distance between an entrance and exit at the street right away to the curb line of an intersection street should be at least 50 feet. He's exceeding that, because he's got just shy of 58 plus the radius. So where, where he's located now, he's got that. And I, I guess I question, you know, Fire Marshal Litchwell has an interesting point at the beginning of his driveway does come across the other property line. I guess the question is, is there a easement of sorts that allowed that at some point? Or was that just kind of existing? Well, I guess I'm kind of looking at this to, I'm trying to sort out, is, is that overlapping a property line? Is that overlapping the, the street right away? I'm not really sure where that line truly is.
Pretty much right on the property line.
Yeah. So, so, so he's making it for the, the 50-foot from an intersection street. And he's not more than five spaces.
Well, he said he has eight.
He has eight available, but he's only required five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I think we have to look at what's, what's required. You know, I guess we start with what's required, you know, if he has more, I guess you could abandon him if that's an issue at that some point. But, you know, he, he's got to have at least a foot, at least a five.
I have a question about that 58 feet, though. It looks like that 58 feet is going from the end of the radius to the edge of the property line.
Right.
And not the driveway. So there is a possible, do you think that if you go to the edge of the driveway closest to the radius, it will still meet that 50-foot minimum?
I see what you're saying, if you take that radius in there. Well, he's, he's got eight feet surplus to get to the center of that driveway. I guess we don't know what the width of the driveway is, but assuming that's just the minimum of the 10, let me see, two-way traffic, because, because you're going to have in and out on that same driveway. That's sort of the minimum width on that driveway should be 18 feet. So I guess the question is, is he consuming more than nine feet out of that, basically 58?
Yeah, because it does, it does look like it's a little bit more than halfway, so it's very close.
Yeah, I'm seeing that.
If I, and Denny can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but isn't there a requirement, or at least a suggestion, to have a 90-degree intersection of driveway to street? Rather than add an angle like that?
It, it would be better, but this is existing. And the back property line, if the driveway falls out onto the town easement to, towards the Taylor roadside. I mean, it would be a lot nicer if the side of the driveway on the 495 side was moved over 10, 12, 14 feet and it comes out more at a 90-degree angle. Like you say, it would be much better for everybody.
Yeah, I'm not, if I remember, that's on a, it's a little bit of a steep hill right there, too. So I don't know if that angle is because of the grading.
Well, let's ask the petitioner, how wide is that driveway?
I don't know how wide it is. But I do know there is room to, and that's actually one of the things that I was thinking, too, is that to, to kind of open up the end of that driveway. So it just makes it easier to, you know, if you're taking a right rather than a left. That's definitely something I couldn't take care of.
What, what was on the property before? So this is the first business here, or there's?
This is the first business.
So we're going to be dealing with the driveway, the signage, the lighting, the hours, the landscaping. I know it's kind of overwhelming, but I think we do need some more information here.
I'll ask a simple question, is that driveway completely paved?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So how can we help the petitioner get this information efficiently here? So it sounds like, I mean, I get it, he's, I would be very overwhelmed with this, with this meeting right now. And I feel for you. So, but I'm also not hearing that you're trying to do anything that, you know, is, it sounds like you'd be a wonderful addition to Berlin. So I think our bigger concerns are, you know, what, what we're approving down the road. So Madam Chair, is there a way to sort of put conditional improvements, like, you know?
On a site plan, we need to approve and sign a site plan.
Yeah.
Which he will need to take to the Registry of Deeds. And this site plan will be for any office activity at this address. I sympathize with the fact that he'll be the only one. But if this were for another office use, I don't know that we would want the ingress and egress to be right there at the traffic light at the junction of 495. Again, Mr. Litchwell, how do you feel about the traffic coming in and out at that point? And again, we have to keep in mind what would happen in the future.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that the police, interim police chief needs to interject as well. It is a bad area right there, but it is existing, I understand that. I think it's going to be based on the line of sight in both directions. Once you enter out onto Route 62, will be a major impact on, you know, either coming across both, both lanes coming to and from the property.
And again, this has been used as a residence, so that was a little different. But now it's being used as office space. Does our interim almost police chief hear the comment?
He's been promoted, but he's still muted at the moment. There he goes.
Okay, I'm here. You know, I do agree with Dave, we do have to be careful, especially with the property line there. For us to approve my driveway, not knowing that the driveway is actually on the property of the business. You know, I, you know, the idea of a secondary driveway for a business. However, I understand the, kind of particular here. It's definitely a, a money issue. I just think there's too many, too many questions that we have. Especially like Susanna brought up, the 57.912, that line is, looks like it's, you know, good 10 feet wider. So I think we're not even at the 50-feet minimum. And I do agree with Dave, it's a very dangerous intersection, that area. Especially cars pulling on Taylor Road, pulling in the gas station and also trying to get on 495 South. You know, commuter traffic does get really congested there. I do appreciate that he is saying that he's the sole employee that will be there. But if, if a year from now, somebody doesn't offer him something he can't refuse to turning into another business. And then, you know, next thing you know, it's already a site plan approved and you have five people in and out of there and people coming in and out all day long.
Thank you. A question to the petitioner, are you hearing what some of the questions are that we have?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? It, it just cut out for a second.
Are, are you hearing some of the questions that we have?
Yes, yes. I, I agree with you as far as moving forward and, and if there was a high-traffic building in there, I just, all I want to do is, you know, make it safe. And the driveway stuff, I'm willing to do whatever it takes on that end. If I have to expand it to the right, that's fine. I, I feel like that's a, or anything with the parking, that you like to see, that's, I feel like that's an easy fix on my end. And then I can certainly make it a more detailed site plan with, with shrubs and lighting and label the parking. If there's any way to get just kind of a checklist of, of what you're looking for, so I can just kind of run through it. That would be really helpful.
I think our checklist is in the bylaw. You know, we're supposed to approve any signage. You know, with any lighting, I mean, all those exterior lighting, all those things, because it's now commercial as opposed to being a residence, must be approved on the site plan. And it's for your own good. I mean, someone could complain about a light you have and if it's on the site plan, then you have permission to have it there. We mentioned about access and egress out onto Taylor Road. You're not looking for even something paved. Is there some way that you could get your access and egress from Taylor Road? Because remember, while we have sympathy for your position as an entrepreneur or whatever, and a low use, we have to prepare for that use being expanded by the next person that you either leave or sell to. And they would be able to have this same opening for maybe a much higher, higher volume of in-and-out traffic.
Right.
We're looking at it as a safety hazard. Let me ask, let me ask the emergency services. Would it be preferable to have the driveway for access and egress come from Taylor Road?
I mean, that would definitely be desirable, but I'm also not the one writing the check for it.
Right.
I mean, I agree, if there was a one-way, if coming off of 62 was in a one-way and there was an exit off of Taylor Road. But again, it's going to be a huge cost.
Would either of you be willing to live with a real estate broker's office there in that space? With the current driveway?
Well, the other issue too is if that driveway has to move to the east 10 feet, I think, you know, it's going to be a much bigger path. Than than what you imagine, because it's going to be a great issue as well. That driveway, to my recollection, I've been up it several times, is already on a hill. So it's not like you can just move it 10 more feet to the Eastley direction. And there's going to be a much steeper grade to get in there, and I believe there is a great issue for driveways as well.
Yes, that's what I was asking earlier.
Mr. Yuradi, are you hearing what's being said?
Yes, yeah. I don't know if I have any comments on it. I just, I mean, if, of course, if money wasn't an issue, I would, I would, you know, I would. I would want to put a driveway at Taylor Road, but I I just, it's such a long span. It's just, it's going to cost a fortune.
It doesn't need to be paved.
It's 285 feet from the backside of the house to Taylor Road. And. Would he get a? Easement or something from? The people at Central Street to come out? In the back, which would ease his problems quite a bit.
I actually tried to contact them about that. And they they weren't very receptive. They just, they said they wouldn't. They wouldn't allow anything. I I was having trouble actually putting a mailbox there and they wouldn't let me do it, so.
Where was the mailbox going to go on the, um, as we look at the planned on the left-hand side of the driveway?
Yeah, that's where the postmaster wanted us to put it for ease of.
Delivery, yeah.
So they could just drive right up to it. Yeah, and then I got a, I got, I haven't put it up yet, but I, they allowed me to do that right behind the sign, the street sign. And then I got like a two-sided mailbox, so you don't have to walk on the street. You could just either drive up or just access it from the back.
Well, that would mean to me, too, that the driveway is partially on their property.
Well, there was a street sign. They said they put it right behind the street sign on that side.
No, no, but if the owner of the property next to you, between you and Taylor Road. Would not allow you to put up a mailbox on the left-hand side of your.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Clarify. So they originally wanted me to put it on Taylor Road on the side street. And they they wouldn't allow me to do that. So then we asked about. To put it right behind the sign on the main road and they allowed us to do that.
Okay, does anyone have any more questions? We can do one or two things this evening, Mr. Yuradi. Um, and that is to go on the plan that you've developed for us. That, as you heard, are missing several segments. Or we can afford you the opportunity to come back with a revised plan. And. Meet with us again next month.
I guess a revised plan. I guess. Would probably be the better bet. Uh, I guess I'm looking for a little feedback, just, uh, I'm obviously new at this, as you can tell. What would be my best bet here, you know, uh, in order to get this taken care of, I guess?
We would have to vote on the plan and its ambiguities. Which may or may not be in your favor.
Okay, so I, okay, I appreciate it. So I can certainly, I could certainly add, you know, the label, the parking, the shrubs, the lighting. I'll get, I'll get a, you know, an actual sign together. That's the easy stuff. I just don't know.
You know what's on the sign. We need to know if the sign is lighted and what the size of it is.
Okay.
If I may. If I may interject here, Mr. Yuradi. My general feeling. With my, the fellow members of the board here is that I don't think anybody is hostile towards your proposal. I think. General feeling I get is we're pretty accepting of the idea of you want to turn this into an office. So that's just for kind of your. Understanding of, I think, where the board is coming from. I can't, I can't promise you what everybody's going to vote, but. The impression I get is nobody is deeply offended by this whole idea. We, if we continue this meeting. Till next month, you would have the opportunity to go and. Talk to the fire department and talk to the police department and work out any issues that might be there. From my viewpoint, I know when we sit in these meetings and we quiz the fire or police departments. And they say, you know, they raise their hand and they say, we don't have any issues. We just kind of move on to the next item from there. Because we assume that you've already worked those out with them. And any issues that were there have been taken care of. So I would encourage you to make appointments and go talk to those folks. And then to basically get a copy of the zoning bylaw. And go to page 96 and go through the site plan review, and it tells you what should be on your drawings. So it, you know, it goes through. You know, existing structures and any new proposed structures and where your parking is and. What all you should be designating on your drawing. So if you come back to us with that additional detail on those drawings, it would help you significantly.
Okay, and.
And also read the section on, you know, the parking and driveways. Because the, um, you just want to make sure that your parking spots are the right size.
So if you have questions about that, maybe the building inspector would be a good resource to help clarify some things that, you know. Aren't always crystal clear.
Yes, absolutely. Mike, if you have questions on this stuff, let me know.
Okay, I appreciate it. Um, now, the, um, the site plan, does that have to be? I know there was a possibility of exception that it had to be like a certified site plan. Am I able to just add to this one or does that have to be?
Well, do you have any? When you go to record it, you're going to need a vellum. Do you have a vellum?
If I knew what that was, I might.
You're going to need an architect's approval on it.
Okay, so, so, so hire an architect to do it. I guess that's what I was getting at. Um, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, it's not, not necessarily an architect. What you need is someone that can stamp the drawing. So it could be a civil engineer, it could be a land surveyor, but it has to, it has to be official. And vellum is translucent paper. It could be Mylar. Originally, vellum was animal skin, but thankfully, they don't do that anymore.
Okay, I definitely don't have that.
And we need a spot on the plan, hopefully, for the signatures of the board and a date. Because that's what you'll receive is a signed copy that you can get a print of. And put the, um, whatever skin you use, goes to the Registry of Deeds.
Okay. All right, so it seems, seems like the, I guess, the big issue is the driveway access. And I would. I would kind of flush that out by talking to the fire department, the police department on what they want to see. Okay.
I think I have personal concerns, having lived in that somewhat close neighborhood. That the, the width of the driveway, that the driveway is in fact on your land. And access and egress. And while you may not be able to put it in immediately. I think your plan might want to show an access point. Um, to the rear of your property onto Taylor Road.
Okay, now, when you say, um, when you say it doesn't have to be paved, is that, does that just need to be cleared of any? Debris and brush and scraped down, or is it something where it has to be like crushed asphalt or something like that?
That would be my take. A driveway is a driveway. How did the rest of you feel?
I I agree. I like having it on the site plan because then it's recorded. So if it does change hands, that driveway is there and it might be easier for the. The other departments to enforce the use of that second driveway, even though it's not needed now.
And I think it would also improve the value of your land. I think that, you know, if you were at some point to want to sell or lease that land. To some higher volume. Business, they would at least have a way in and out, and it may make nice with your neighbors.
If. Can we just get a, a question for the, the building inspector? Um, whether that needs to be paved or not, because my, my reading is that the driveway and parking areas are required to be paved.
I don't have a direct answer without looking it up, but I think on the site plan, you might be correct that. It does require driveways and parking areas to be paved.
I've been looking at the plan and I want to know why they can't come out between the house and the property line. And loop around the backside of the house and you would have a 90 degree corner at the, at the street. For the time being, until he can put in, that's 285 feet. That'll be. Very costly to dig it out. Plus, I believe this, I remember right, there's quite a banking. At the backside of the property on Taylor Road. He'd be looking at at least a minimum, probably have a 10-foot fill.
Yeah, comes up in the back right before the road.
How does the rest of the board feel about access and egress? Matt, you have any thoughts?
You know, again, if he goes and talks and gets this communication in order, and then if he does have a backup. I think that's more than enough. I don't, I, there's plenty of driveways in town that are not paved and probably in the future. I would think with con, with paving and whatnot, they may be changing regulations on that anyway. So again, I think he's headed in the right direction. He's got to review what he needs for a site plan review. And it just has to be updated with about six or seven additional items.
And. Do you think that the access and egress should be from Taylor Road?
Lynn, I haven't looked at it. I, you people are more familiar with that area. Probably in the future, it's certainly not going to get easier to get onto 495. It will be worse. And again, if he goes any additional parking spaces. And like they said earlier, traffic in and out of there, I think Taylor Road would be a better idea. But I don't know what the, the numbers are either, what it's going to cost them.
Ginny, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I, um, I also have not, uh, looked at the property from Taylor Road to be familiar. With, uh, where this property line is. I realize it's a great distance. And would incur quite an expense. I also. Uh, am not aware if a hot top is required for a driveway. But definitely Taylor Road would be ideal, considering. Where the driveway presently exists on Route 62. And I know it's, uh, for quite some time. The angle of it, it was often mistaken for the exit onto 495 South. And. And I, I think in the future, uh, definitely Taylor Road would be the ideal option. But again, I have not seen, I, I, I have not driven down Taylor Road to take a look. And see the grade or anything else.
Keith, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, I guess, I guess a big factor here is if it needs to be paved or not. I mean, it does feel like. And a very unreasonable expense or, you know, burden to do that.
One of the things, one of the things we might suggest is. For it to be listed as the future. Uh, exit and egress and put a date time on when it needs to be done by. As a possibility. Susanna, do you have any thoughts?
I do. Someone else can read section, um, 840, which is access and driveway standards. I did not see anything that said it had to be paved.
Actually, Mary, the jacket is written Hanks, uh, 825 paving. It says, except in case of parking space provided for dwellings, off-street parking and loading area should be paved. To specification prepared by the selectmen with advice of the planning board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Danny, do you have any thoughts?
I think it's a great place for it. Too bad the neighbors didn't get along with them. And we'll see where we go. Did I lose you folks?
No.
Well.
Jim, did you have an opportunity?
Um, again, I'm, I'm just reading that, that paragraph 825, looking at this. And it does say the parking areas and the loading areas will be paved. It doesn't say the driveway has to be paved. So. How do we want to read that? I guess is the question. I mean, I guess you could read it. Either way, either the, you know, you could say the driveway has to be paved because everything else is paved, or. Maybe the driveway could be dirt or gravel and just the parking areas have to be paved.
Road grindings.
Yeah.
I, I guess I have a question, maybe back to police and fire. If, if, if the board is inclined to allow him to keep his driveway in a similar location or back onto Central. What if coming, exiting out of his driveway was a right turn only? Is there any benefit to that?
Well, I don't know. That'd be up to public safety.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. You know, is public safety still on board? Are they still able to chime in on that?
Well, I'd be definitely on board with the right turn only. But like I said, we need to make sure that that driveway is the 50 feet. From, from, uh, Taylor Road there. You know, I'm still questioning on that, but I'm more than willing. If he wants to come out and meet with us beginning of next week, not certain what my, my schedule is. I don't have, I'm not at my office with a computer. More than happy to, you know, walk the street and go over what we're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. That'd be great.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, um, Mr. Yuradi, do you have a feel for what we're looking for here? What we need to do is go back and go into. The section. 1210, wait a minute. Twelve, ten, wait a minute, no, it's not.
Twelve thirty-four.
Twelve thirty-four, you're right. Uh, required site plan contents. And also to look at the parking and access and egress. And maybe speak with our building commissioner Rich Hanks and have him take a look at what you're looking to do. We need better defined lot lines, and if in fact you are encroaching on the neighbor, whether or not there's an easement. I think you might find if in fact you are. That it might be cheaper to have a dirt road coming in the back than it would to be trying to deal with your neighbor.
Okay, um. So when you say better defined lot lines, are you looking for like a professional survey?
We're looking to know how wide the driveway is.
Okay.
Where the lot lines actually are and how much of the driveway may or may not be encroaching on the neighbor. Maybe something also about the grade of the road going in there. Having driven up that road a few times, or up that driveway a few times. That's quite a job in winter. Um, I think you need to work out with our building commissioner whether or not he would require you to pave that road if you were to choose to come out on Taylor Road. Because I think if it's not required to be paved. It it can be some um, hard pan or something like that. Then I think that that may be something you'd want to look into. Just from safety concerns and also for in the future, I think it would add value to your property. Um, any screening you're going to do, I don't think, you know, if you're going to leave natural vegetation. Just if you read through the site plan requirements and maybe our building commissioner can help you if you have any questions. So what I'm going to ask you to do is we can either vote on the plan that you've submitted. Or we can um, continue this hearing till our next monthly meeting in December at your request. So do you wish to request a continuance?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the petitioner is requesting a continuance until our December meeting so that he can further modify his plans. And uh, we're going to ask him as a result of that. Leanne, when he comes into the building office, he needs to file the extension, okay? Right now, we'll go on the verbal. Normally, we would have you sign an extension of time for us. But Leanne, you can handle that. Leanne works in the building commissioner's office and her main job is in fact for the inspectors, including the building commissioner. Uh, she's there Monday and Wednesday, Leanne?
Yes.
So if you, you know, stop in sometime on a Monday or a Wednesday morning, you can get that form. Okay, I would ask um, that we um, I would entertain a motion to uh, approve the request of the petitioner for a continuance. Until our meeting in December, which is what, the eighth, I think?
Yeah, madam, madam chair, I'd make a motion to continue this hearing to December eighth at seven P M.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the continuance? If not, I'll do a roll call. Jim?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so it's a unanimous vote. We thank you, Mr. Urrati, and we look forward to seeing you next month. And know that the board is in favor of what you're trying to do down there.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the help, everyone. See you next month.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to, um, well, we we did continue the hearing, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, we're back to our regular meeting. A handful of things for you folks that you'll be thrilled about. First of all, three of us are due to renew our uh, membership in this elite society.
You're doing what the who?
Basically, our term is up.
Oh. I thought we took care of that.
I thought we did too, but I I heard from um, Margaret at town meeting. And um, no, supposedly. It's myself and Denny and Keith. So what I'm going to do is um, we are up this month and they haven't, the selectmen haven't voted yet. So what I would first do is ask Denny, are you interested in remaining on the committee?
Yes.
And Keith, are you interested?
Can I hear whether you're staying or not? No, yes, I am interested.
Don't threaten us. Okay, and yes, I'm interested. My suggestion would be, and we can have one motion. That we suggest to the um, selectman that we are in support of myself for four years. Which would be until two thousand twenty-five. Denny for five years and Keith for five years. And that would keep, that would now make us what we're supposed to be, one person every five years. Would anyone care to make that?
And I'll second.
Leanne, do you know what the motion was?
Yes, motion to recommend to the select board, um, Lynn for four years, Denny for five, Keith for five.
Right, for reappointment.
Reappointment.
And you could put in parentheses around myself, this.
The years, yeah.
Five year, okay. All right, I'll um, go around for a vote. We've made the motion and we've got a second, right?
Yeah.
And Jim?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Jenny?
Aye.
Leanne? No, no, yeah, Leanne. Tonight.
Hi.
Danny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
And Keith? I think I got everybody and I'm a yes. Okay, um. Then, just for those of you that might be curious, Pat, you go until next year.
Okay.
Um, Jenny, you go until two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
Jim, you go until twenty twenty-four. And Susanna, you go until twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
I had Leanne send to you an application form. Has everybody seen that?
Yes.
An updated application form. And I just wanted to run through with you. What the changes are, not that you don't have a copy, but the town clerk asked that we put a line across the top for her to put down her uh, application number. And um, the the amount that was paid. So I included that line. For space purposes and others, I combined line five and six, which was when the applicant is not the owner. And then I added a new number six, which is the application type. There was no place on there where it said whether it was a site plan or a special permit or whatever it was. With numbers one and five, both the petitioner and the um, owner, I added um, company and title. So if, you know, the owner is a um, corporation, then we want to know the the company name. With number ten, I add, I'm considered, but I did not add, and I wanted to know your take. We have book and page and everything, and people are kind of confused. Book and page, I didn't know I wrote a book, okay? What it is, is the book and page at the registry of deeds. And I didn't know if we wanted to add that in there as recorded in the registry of deeds or something like that. I did not as yet put that in. And number fourteen, that's the grid of the all the people that'll attend. I reduced it from five to four. We don't usually use more than three, even in a forty B. In number fourteen, yeah, that's I reduced the number. Oh, I also added email. For those parties that will be attending or representing the petitioner. Number eighteen, on the second page, I eliminated it. That was the one that the town clerk reviewed it and said it was complete or something. She doesn't use it, she crosses it out. And quite frankly, doesn't want to be responsible for that, so I eliminated it. Um, on number nineteen.
I don't have nineteen.
I don't either.
Uh, yeah.
That's because I eliminated nineteen. What nineteen was, was the filing with the.
You eliminated eighteen, so that makes nineteen the new eighteen.
Yes, but there was also nineteen and it was listed as the basically certification of the town clerk.
Oh, okay.
Now, I moved up the signatures of the petitioner and owner. And moved down and didn't number either of those, okay? Because I just didn't think it was like a question, okay?
Do we fix number eighteen?
It's okay, isn't it?
It's okay as it is.
Is it?
Yes.
So if somebody is fully updated on their property taxes and everything, they have to give an explanation of why?
Well, they have to explain what it is that they haven't done. I haven't paid taxes in twelve years.
That's that's not what the the question says, though. The way the question is worded, it says, is the, is this property current with this financial obligations to the town of Berlin? So if you're answering yes, then you have to explain why on a separate sheet.
So it should be no.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, simple enough. My error, I apologize. And then for the signatory. I added in for them to print or type their name underneath. Sometimes we get a petition from a corporation and there's like three initials on there and we have no idea who they are or what title they hold within the company. And that was the other thing is company and title if applicable. So if they are representing a company, they need to put the name of the company and the company title. Um, at the bottom, we used to have a for board use only. And it was basically the filing date and when the hearing was set. And I think when the decision was due. We never use it. So in the thought of being able to increase the size of the type so you could read things, I eliminated it. Because, Leanne, we never use that, right?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to ask, I know, Susanna, you said you dropped this down into a PDF for us.
Yes.
So what I'd like to do um, is have you folks, and again, we and you have the change about if it's yes.
Yep, number eight.
To know.
Yep.
And um, give you folks until Monday to let Leanne know if there's anything you disagree with beyond that era of mine. Or anything you think, you know, if you think it's important, we put back the bottom piece that we never used.
For seven, eight, nine, location of property, is that address or is that something different?
That was what it was before and it is the location of the property.
So not address, but location. I guess I'm wondering if that's clear, like what what they're, what you're looking to fill in here.
All right, what would you like to have it changed to?
Well, I don't know. I mean, is it address, is that, um, could it? Are there potentials for it to be something different than a mailing address or?
Would you like it to say property location slash address? I'm thinking of those cases in which, for example, we gave an in-law apartment to a um, unit in a development and we called it lot eighteen or something. So rather than a street address, it could conceivably be, you know, lot eighteen at Green Acres.
No, I got you. Yeah, I don't think it hurts to put address just to.
So we just put uh, property location slash address?
I think. Well, Lynn, I have a question.
Okay.
If I were applying and I have this application form. And it's asking for the zoning district and the map lot page, et cetera. How the applicant would apply how the easiest? From a tax bill or?
The assessors have that information.
Okay.
So um, I think that they can be directed to the assessors to get that information, what the book and page are. The only question I had is do we want to put that it's from the registry of deeds?
Oh, yeah.
I think so.
Okay, so Leanne, if you could just make note. Is that a general consensus? Does anyone disagree? Um, that we want to put under number ten? Add registry of deeds, book, page, whatever.
No, I thought that was number nine.
Number nine.
Oh, is it number nine? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I think it would be helpful.
So for example, we could re- rephrase that to map slash lot slash book slash page as recorded with the registry of deeds.
Well, then you need another line.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, you're getting rid of identi- identification for property, so.
Yeah.
Well, the, what you have in front of you just fits.
Uh, well, I I like Jim's idea, just if I were an applicant applying, I think it would make it perfectly clear.
Okay, so you want book page, yada, yada, as recorded in the registry of deeds?
Yes.
Did you get that, Leanne? Okay. If something goes other than these things, was there anything else? We're talking about um, recording in the registry of deeds. We're talking about um, what else? We had my no-no. And I'm going to change the yes to no on number, what was it?
Eighteen.
Okay, and then um.
The property location slash address. Keith, what number were those?
Um, that was. No, the uh, address is.
Yeah, number seven.
Seven, you're right, seven.
Okay.
Off the top of your head, is there anything else right now?
No. Nice job, actually. It's not easy to do this. You did a good job.
Oh, you have no idea. Well, to try to balance the size of the print and what is going in there, but anyway. Okay, what I'll do is say, if something goes bump in the night and you think it needs changing, would you please send a note to Leanne so she can see it Monday? Otherwise, what we'll do is have Leanne send out a revised copy of this. And then we'll ask Susannah to drop it into a PDF. Uh, one problem I did run into, I don't know if it's my printer or not, and I didn't have to increase the bottom and top margins. It was not printing what I had in there as of, you know, the, the footer. It wasn't printing the footer.
It must be, because when I printed it, it was fine.
Oh, excellent, okay. So let's see what else there is. Denny, do you care to make a statement about the $5,000 or not?
I finally was able to get ahold of Matt Senni, and he called again tonight and said that he had sent a request for the money to my email and also to Leanne's email. And we'll see if it got here yet. If not, I can, finally got a good phone number for him.
Is it up to us to give it back to him? Who did he give it to?
I believe they were the petitioners at the time.
No, Senni went through the planning board. That was an overlay district.
Well, the one I have from Emerson Chandler, it's, uh, so traffic pair review villages at River Run, Berlin, Mass. Located on River Road in Berlin, Mass.
Oh, okay, so was that a 40B?
Yes.
Okay, so it would have come to us, Denny. Okay, I think we've hung around with this long enough, then. Why don't you bring it next month after you get the bill? And we'll vote to release the money.
Yeah, I haven't heard back as of yet from the people from Monmouth, Chusset, and Lomond stuff. I've made calls, and I can't seem to get the lady to send that.
Well, you can talk to June, but I think, you know, you've pretty well exhausted all avenues. Obviously, the money isn't being spent by anyone. Obviously, it was Senni who put the money in there, correct?
Yes.
And if that's the case, I think, you know, maybe we could just take a vote having it to do with River Run and go from there. Anyone object to that?
I would like to, Chris Keefe is still with us, and if I remember from the last town meeting that I went to, which was not last night, they owed money to the town. So if they, if River Run owes money to the town, can we give the money back to River Run? Or does it have to go to get approval from the selectmen?
May I ask? There is River Run and River Bridge. I don't know the difference between the two.
It, it's pretty complicated. This is what I got from Leanne. Is a con- contact info from Boundless Adventure at River Run. So I'm going out with that is the little development that used to be in the spooky world parking lot.
It's out back, and they do boundless adventures? Is that River Run?
The road.
That, that's River Run.
And River Bridge are the apartments.
They can enter the gas station.
Okay.
The hotel.
Yeah, if this is boundless adventures, I don't want to throw fuel on the fire, but they still have some items on the site plan that they haven't finished. Do you want me to just take that back?
No. No, no.
Well, I, I don't know if you want to check on it. Maybe they can put the money to what they haven't done.
Yikes, okay.
I, I'm not clear, I'm not clear what exactly, is this $5,000, Denny?
Yes. Five thousand and some pennies for interest.
And is it something that what would have, would it have been for a site plan, you say, for?
Actually, it was for some kind of border health thing, wasn't it, Denny?
But my memory serves me correct, it was something to do with the well. They ended up bringing down out of that project and onto River Road west, up to the corner so that they could continue building, because that well, they could get tested. Whereas the other ones, the other two that they put out in the field, they needed to be tested and they couldn't get them tested.
Okay, so they have two wells, I believe, on River Run. And I think they may have at some point wanted to find out, you know, how, how much water they could produce and that kind of thing. Could that have been something to do with that?
This was something that was put in escrow, and we're not sure for what, which board. Denny's done quite a bit of investigation. He's gone to the Board of Health. This would be like for a peer review type thing?
Yeah.
Um, and the Board of Health claims no responsibility. We've gone to the planning board. We've gone to our board. And no one, there's no note in June's records as to for whom the money was other than it was for some border health type organization, right? Some.
Yeah.
Maybe water, water would fall under border health.
Right, right.
And this, and this was done when, uh, Bracken Lucas were town council.
Oh, that was a while ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, three.
So June wants, June wants to return the money.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's Senni, God knows, he claims to need it.
Yeah.
She wants to get it off the records.
Although Pat has mentioned that they have not met the expectations at the site of Boundless Adventures.
Yeah, if it has something to do with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's the only bargaining power only that we have right now to not reimburse them.
Maybe we should, well, yeah, this is being recorded, correct?
Yes.
I won't say this then.
All right, I said it. I probably shouldn't have.
Oh, I mean, what I was gonna say, I'm not saying it now.
Oh, I said it, damn it. All right. Oh, sure.
One of the, one of the things I think we could do, if you would like, would be for the board to say the money is not ours. We have no interest in it. And designate it to the Board of Selectmen to dispose of. And then you can go from there. Does that make sense?
Well, Lynn, should we first find out what it was for initially? There's got to be some record.
Jenny has tried. Oh. No one will raise their hand.
And, and is, and are the Sennys asking for this money back?
No.
No, June wants to get rid of it off the books.
Okay, well, you know.
I'm trying to get to them. I've called Boundless Adventures. They have no interest to. They didn't put up any money. So they don't want it. And I was fine, I called Chris Senni, and I finally found in my phone that I had Matt Senni's number from way back when. And he was the only one that answered me. And he said he had put the, she's, Leanne's voice, believing.
Yep. She's raising, and she wants to speak, but you finish.
That, Matt Senni would like to have the $5,000 back.
Of course he would, of course he would.
Yep.
You know what, though? It would probably go right back to the town, so.
Matt, Matt Senni did send an email at 5:19 PM addressed to the board. ZBA members, Dennis Bartlett asked me to reach out to you. We believe we no longer need any review services from the ZBA. Dennis asked me to inform you of as we have monies we gave the ZBA for any expenses. This, with this behind us, we would like to get the remaining money sent back to us. Dennis believes this amount to be around $5,000. If you have any questions, please reach back at this email address or call my cell phone number. And then the check can be made out to River Bridge with the mailing address. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter.
I, I think I would suggest that if you don't have any other alternatives, that you contact Margaret. And between her and June, they should be able to figure this out.
Well, the problem is it was designated for a specific company, was it not?
River Run, River Run, not River Bridge, you said.
No, no.
Yeah.
River Run is the.
For use, obtaining information from a corporation, right? That deals in some sort of septic or something, right, Denny?
Yes, I, I can't find much of what it actually was for.
I, I think that maybe even Mary, if you contact Margaret, Mary might have some minutes as to something that it might be from, if you have a date, 2003, you said?
March, when Emerson Chandler got this letter, it was March 13th, 2003.
Okay.
This came from the town account.
They should, they should be able to figure it out.
Well, June, uh, on one of the other ones, June was able to supply me with the check number and the date, and this, she has nothing on this one.
Okay. Uh, do you want?
Can we at least see where the check came from, if she has the check number?
She doesn't have one for River Bridge, or River Run. She does not.
What I'm saying is someone signed that check, right?
Right, but she has no record of it in her system.
But there may be something in the minutes that Mary might be able to find, too.
Okay, well, well, what I, what I have is the
If it was the ZBA, I, I don't know who would have been taking minute, I there's no minutes, like I think back then, people handwritten them or, and kept them at home or whatever. I mean, I can.
No, I mean, I mean, our minutes, could it be in select, selectmen minutes?
Yeah, was Mary Secretary in oh, three?
No.
No, but she said.
Sardell was.
Right, and she is, she does, Peggy Sardell.
Oh, yes.
And she does, she does check with Peggy if she doesn't know something historically. And then they also have things on the computer from way back when. So they, Mary's pretty good at Googling things in her computer.
Just as a question here, Dennis, did you go through the filing cabinet for the ZBA records?
No.
Because there are minutes of meetings in those drawers.
Yes. And there's no reasoning how they are. I have this well, J N E L proposal number, peer review, 40B, River Run, Berlin, Mass.
J N E L?
Yes. I'm gonna say that's Judas, Judith Nitschit Engineering, Inc.
Forty and slip Judas. Okay, could I make a suggestion?
Okay.
Chris, can you talk to Denny and Margaret? And we'll give it another month and see if Mary or Margaret can come up with their resolution. Would that be reasonable? Will you work with Jenny, Chris?
Sure.
And see if we can find out what this is about.
Okay.
Okay, I just have one more thing, folks. And that is Pat and Ginny, have you come up with a number of hours you need to do that project so that we can get that started?
Lynn, I don't think we can give you an estimate until we dig into it and see exactly what's involved. I'm, I do look forward to getting started. But, no, we don't have an answer. I don't think, Pat, do you?
Well, could we say it's a minimum of 100 hours?
Yes, or, or why not? That's a starting point.
What I'm saying.
That's a safe.
That's safe, let's start there.
Something down to be approved, okay? And you're both willing to do this, so I'll.
I look forward to it, yes.
To the Council on Aging. And okay, so I'll put this down, and this is to document in a table the activity of the ZBA, correct?
Uh, pertaining to the, um, it escapes me. What do we, what are we?
Special permit?
Uh, special permits for, um,
in-law.
In-law, thank you, yes.
Oh, special permits with time limits?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna go back and research, I would expect the last 10 years, okay? And see which ones had and which ones did not have a time limit on them.
Yep.
And, and you're gonna kind of decide, you know, column-wise, when they expire, how you're gonna deal with that, and if they come back and renew and renew and renew, how the table will include that.
Yeah.
If I do that, if I do that right up, then maybe while you're indoors this winter, you can do that and maybe even do it at the town hall, you know?
Okay.
Okay, well, that's all I had. Does anybody have anything else other than the availability for our next meeting on 12/8?
We need to approve meeting minutes from last month.
Oh, good. Leanne, God love you.
I wasn't there.
Let's do that first. Okay, everyone has the minutes?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the meetings, meeting minutes from last month.
As presented, okay. Is there a second, please? I'll go around for yay and nay, Jim?
Aye.
Pat?
Yay.
Denny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Susannah?
Aye.
And I take it Ginny is voting present because she wasn't present at the last meeting?
Correct.
Okay, are we all set with you, Leanne?
Yeah, but can I just let Denny know that in the ZBA box at town offices are the reconciliations from the accounting department for you?
Okay.
That's all I got.
And Denny, 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 I'll talk to Margaret and I'll get back to you, okay?
Hey, do you have my cell phone number?
No, could you give it to me?
I can, you ready?
Yep.
Nine, seven, eight.
Nine, seven, eight?
Two, six, five.
Two, six, five?
Three, five, one, eight.
Three, five, one, eight, got it.
Now everybody has it.
All of you two.
True.
My new phone doesn't work.
Okay.
Are you in Berlin, Denny, now?
Yes, I am.
Oh, good, okay. Um, all right, the only other thing is our attendance for next month, is there anyone present that is not going to be able to be present on the eighth? It will be again a Zoom meeting.
With the continuation of 275 Central Street, and if any applications came in by nine o'clock tonight, I will, I will check, I will check on Friday to see if anything came in by tonight's deadline.
And next month, we can review the time we meet. I know that a lot of you wanted to meet at seven o'clock because of it being daylight. And I don't know if it's gonna be more or less convenient to move it. I mean, I'm fine with seven, but we'll see what folks think. Okay, we have that all squared away. Does anyone here to make a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Still moved.
Seconding.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, Jim?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Denny?
Aye.
Susannah?
Aye.
And Keith?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, we are adjourned.